I would like to call the Fairfield County Council regular meeting to order in Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, 5/26/2021. Can we get approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the approval of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose as nay. The agenda stand approved. Can we get invocation by Vice Chairman Green?
Dear heavenly fathers, we come before you with humble hearts. We're asking for your leadership and guidance as we make decisions to benefit the citizens of Fairfield County. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, down to item four, approval of the minutes. Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Prose as nay. The minutes stands approved. Now we down to public presentation. A proclamation recognizing August 15th through 21, 2021 at South Carolina Aviation Week. Mr. Callahan, you want me to read? Or you want to do that?
I can give a little background first. South Carolina Aviation Week is a statewide celebration of the economic and education impact of airports and aviation industry. It was celebrated last year from the 15th to the 22nd of August and centered around National Aviation Day. It's a planned partnership by South Carolina Aviation Association and the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. SCAA actively promotes and encourages aviation and airport development to meet air transportation needs and assist the state in achieving economic development goals. Its membership is comprised mostly of airports and aviators across the state. And I also wanted to just let you guys know how Fairfield County Airport will be contributing to this and taking part in it for the second consecutive year. Two high school students, one from Richard Wynn and one from Fairfield Central, will experience a flight from behind the yoke alongside a certified flight instructor. So we appreciate SNS Aviation for donating the aircraft fuel and flight instructors' time for the discovery flight operations. And they participated last year as well, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The State of South Carolina, Count of Fairfield, proclamation recognizing August 15th through the 21st, 2021 at South Carolina Aviation Week. Whereas Aviation Week is an annual event held in conjunction with August Wright Birthday on August 19th, 1871. It consists of a week-long celebration promoting aviation through events that highlight the education and economic impact of airports throughout the state and whereas our state is home to 58 publicly-owned, public-use airports, including six commercial service airports and 54 general aviation airports, along with five military airports. More than 2.5 million visitors arrive in South Carolina by aircraft and commercial services and general aviation airports support more than 122,000 jobs, accounting for an additional 16.3 billion to the state's economy annually and then it goes on. And it said, now therefore be it resolved that we Fairfield County Council do hereby proclaim August 15th, 21, 2021 at South Carolina Aviation Week. We hereby urge all citizens to recognize aviation for a significant contribution to our quality of life and economic growth and stability. Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second for this proclamation, recognizing August 15th through 21, 2021 at South Carolina Aviation Week. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Prose as nay. Okay, stands approved. Thank you. Now we're down to item six, first public comment section. Mr. Callahan.
Okay, my first speaker tonight is Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Want to comment on 773. I call this the gumbo ordinance. It's got a lot of things mixed in there that really don't go with each other. And it kind of mirrors a lot of, a lot of things that's going on with our council at this, at this time. And let me, let me point out just a couple of things that, that are disconcerting about this gumbo ordinance. Besides being a gumbo ordinance, how do you vote on, on an ordinance with disparate items that aren't related to each other? If you don't like one, then you vote no, but you might have liked the other two. Doesn't make sense at all. It's not a way to run a government, any type of entity, government or business. But the real key is, if I recall during the budget session, the sky was falling were the speeches. We're doomed. We've got to be a tight budget. They're not just less than little more than 30 days after the budget period, we're already adding items to the budget. So I got to know, was that just theatrics? That the sky is falling during the budget period? Or was that willful ignorance of being unable to forecast what was ahead? Or a combination of the two? The citizens deserve better than theatrics and inability to forecast the government. It's like running a ship without a rudder. We're just turning in circles and we can't, and not only that, we can't take the word of what people are saying. We either have a tight budget and then we don't add to it, or we don't. And we can figure out what's coming ahead far as income, revenue, revenue from all streams, and of course expenses. And of course, this goes in line with, how much did we just invest in Parker Poe? And wasn't it Parker Poe that led us down a path that, that's still an anvil around our necks? Did we do any research there? So lack of research in, in our budget, and a lack of research in, in these spendings, it really ruins the credibility of the council. And, and an ordinance that, a gumbo ordinance with disparate items all mixed together, and we try to separate them and vote on them, and it doesn't make sense at all. That's no way to run a government, guys. I think you mean well. I think you want to do well, but it's not working out that way. And certainly, this gumbo ordinance highlights our inability to properly forecast and properly maintain credibility in running our government. Thank you for listening.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Thomas Armstrong.
Good evening, everybody. I come tonight because again, normally as always, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the decisions of council and the direction in which we are leading our county. I'm concerned because just a few months ago during the budget period, Stur was told that we're broke. We're broke, we're broke, we're broke. You know, we, there was a threat of furloughing days. We have to cut back services. Now we're at the point where recycle centers are closed two days a week. You know, we got to make some drastic cuts. We're laying off people. We're putting the end to certain positions because we broke. We have to figure out a way to put together a budget that we can withstand because the other, the other crew put us in a situation. I understood that. I agreed with that. We made some cuts. We stopped trash from being delivered on certain days. We laid off people. Now look at what we did. We approved the budget. Now we're right back to it. We want to rehire a position that we cut because we couldn't afford it. We want to create new positions in the Ridgeway Recreation Facility. Not to say that Ridgeway people don't deserve whatever they deserve, but you all have a responsibility of making sure you're doing things consistently and better for the people. Now we want to go out to Blair. We want to redo outdoor recreation. I ain't got no problem with that. But if we broke, how can we be broke and rich enough to do these things at the same time? It's confusion. You know, to me, it feels as though there's some incompetence going on here. You know, we're giving away the taxpayers' money, $2.2 million of the taxpayers' money, to the teachers' village. You know, all in the name of economics? Come on, y'all. You all need to do a better job in making sure you all are doing what's best for the people of Fairfield County, leaving the personal emphasis out of it. I understand. Seriously, I understand. Let me tell you what I understand. I understand that once upon a time, there was a majority on the board who did whatever they wanted to do, had no concern for the other people. There are seven people elected, all from a single-member district, all who should be working for the betterment of Fairfield United. This other council, this old regime, they did whatever they wanted to do. They spent, 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 spent. I understand that. You folks, you're better than them. You're much better than them. You can't do the same thing they did just because they had power then and you have power now. You still have the responsibility of doing what's right by the people. They're going to get their just punishment or reward for whatever it was that they did. But if you put yourself in the same shoes, then you facing the same fate that they're facing. It's important that you all do what's best for the people. Let's leave personal out of it. I understand because we've had the conversation of how they did things, and we know that went right. But what you going to do? What's your legacy? When you're gone, do people say that all of y'all are just alike?
All right, next we have Ms. Tangi Jacobs.
Ms. Tangi, no Bryce?
No man.
Tangi Bryce. Corrected to next up.
I don't know what be me.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
It's been over a year since I've had the opportunity to stand before our council. So hello, Fairfield County Council. I come today to say thank you for the decision to invite the NRC here. I am looking forward to the, we are looking forward to the presentation from the NRC. We had the opportunity, so I want to say thank you, Fairfield Council, for arranging this and allowing us to stand before you on behalf of the Sierra Club of the Midlands. Again, my name is Tangi Bryce Jacobs, and I currently serve as the environmental justice designee for the Sierra Group. We were given the opportunity to present five questions to you all. I'm sorry, I could not, I did not have copies for everyone, but given the opportunity, I'll read through them quickly. Number one, one of the problems in EJ communities like parts of Fairfield is the lack of internet access. Posting a notice to the federal registry will not inform the most vulnerable members of the community. Is the NRC willing to communicate with EJ communities in effective ways such as the following? Notify people by phone. Send notification postcards, especially after an accident and accidental incident involving nuclear materials. Contact local government entities such as Chair of Fairfield County Council, mayors, state legislature representatives, and other community leaders. Number two, in recent years, one Jenkinsville water, Jenkinsville well, water well for drinking in Fairfield County was close to uranium contamination. What is NRC's responsibility regarding notification to the public in these circumstances? Number three, is NRC willing to notify people with private, with private wells when contamination is detected in an adjacent era, area? Number four, what is the policy regarding public health assistance to the community after contamination has been detected? For example, is the NRC responsible for distributing iodine pills after a radioactive accident? Would you explain under which circumstances iodine pills should be taken? For those that have the handout, our questions, oh goodness, all right. Thank you. Thank you again, and thank you if you're Mr. Suber. Thank you for coming to Fairfield.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Pamela Greenlaw.
My name is Pamela Greenlaw. I want to thank the council for allowing us to come and speak. I'm going to just let you know that our group covers the Midlands, the Midlands group of Sierra Club, and Fairfield County. You're, you're one of our, our counties. So we very much care. I wanted to continue this list that Ms. Jenkins, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Tangi was reading to you. And number five is, how is the community notified about an evacuation route for Fairfield, Fairfield County in the case of a major nuclear accident or incident? What is the current evacuation plan? Is there a center? The community would like to work with you about the evacuation route and how it will be communicated and implemented. And I'm going to add to this last question a little bit. The, the National Environmental Protection Act requires that federal agencies work with local communities when there's going to be pollution involved particularly. And one thing that NRC may need to look at very closely in revising their, the policies and practices of their environmental justice program. And that is to not only accept public comment, but to work with the community in developing the very plan that they would like you to write, to agree to. They should be working hand in glove, not top-down, here's the plan, but working with the community for a plan that's actually going to be workable for you all. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, we're willing to entertain them. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up we have Ms. Priscilla Preston.
We're good.
Okay. All right. Uh, next up is Mr. Jeff Schaefer.
I wasn't gonna pull Randy on you. Good evening, council. Uh, Juneteenth is a federal holiday already. I don't understand why we have to have something different than that, but federal holiday, state's holiday. I know you read the newspaper and you hear things through the grapevine. Now you gotta hear it from me? That's sad, but I'll just repeat it. I'd like to know why we had to spend $200, $200 an hour for a consultant. I'll be waiting for you outside. You can let me know. Uh, when we just fired or got rid of an administrator who was probably less money than that, we have people leaving the county for whatever reasons they have. I'm sure they're good reasons. And we can't hire good people because of the reputation that's abounding about the community. Um, I disagree with Randy. He, he actually thinks you mean well. I don't think you mean well by your actions. Um, you know, I, I, I don't want to sit here and read all this because I'm going to get frustrated and take it out on you. Um, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to let you know that I'm disappointed as well as lots of other people in your actions. Uh, you got elected to do a job for us and yourselves. We're all together, um, to be proactive and bring things to fruition. Uh, instead, what I hear, what I see, I'm reading, and I'm just guessing, is that we've decided to change what was working to what we think will be working for the four of you. It doesn't be affecting these other three or the majority of the community. Um, your agenda to get things done, we'd like to know what that is. Put it out. This is our agenda for the next year or two. This is what we want to accomplish. I'd like to know what that is. If you haven't already done that, by saying that we want to have spent $2.2 million on a Teachers' Village that was already nixed, that we want to put together a, uh, take a million dollars for a bond, um, from the bond, excuse me, from the lawsuit and build a, uh, an MLK monument and take down other monuments. I, I'm confused. I don't understand why we're doing all these things. I'm sure that that million dollars, we could divide it among the 20,000 people living here, and we'd get a couple of hundred bucks to each family. They'd be very happy with that. Uh, I just don't understand the process of all the things that are happening, and I'm sort of obviously discouraged. I told you I'd come back if things aren't improving. I'm back. Things are not improving. I hear from lots of people discouraged, how discouraged they are. Um, it appears that no one has a defined plan for the future, and what it is, we'd like to know. I got four seconds left. I'll say thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Um, thank you, Mr. Call. Uh, we, uh, we're down to public hearing, item seven, A, application and expenditure for the 2021 JAG Justice Assistance Grant Funds at this public hearing. Um, Fairfield County will provide information concerning the proposed use of the funds in identified program purpose area. So, um, Mr. Call.
Okay, um, the sheriff's office is requesting approval to apply for the two, 2021 Justice Assistance Grant Program. Uh, as a requirement of the grant, they must have council's approval before submitting the application. If approved, the total grant amount would be $11,760 and will be used to purchase eight automated external defibrillators. These will be purchased through state contract pricing, and we did not have anybody signed up to speak for the public hearing.
Let me go ahead and open it up first. Um, we, we now open the public hearing at 6:23. Did anybody ask to speak?
No, sir. No, sir.
We also closed the, um, the public hearing at, um, 6:24. Okay, um, can we get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I think that's down.
That'll be on a new business.
It's, it's on the, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Um, we'll wait till, um, we get to that item. Okay, thank you. Down to number eight, ordinance resolution and orders, item A. Um, the third and final reading of ordinance number 772, an order to establish and recognize June 10th as a public holiday in special for Fairfield County. Any of you got that ordinance? Any, any, um, can we get a motion for approval?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I. Uh, poses nay. Let the record show seven zero. Item B, first reading, by tile only, ordinance number 773 to make $1 million and $50,000 in supplemental appropriation for the 2021, 22, 2022 fiscal year for capital projects to include community mini parks on Overlook Road in Black Stock, upgrades to the Witherly Robertson Park, and the roof repairs to the DHS building.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, no discussion on this item, this first reading, this first reading, no discussion. Um, so all in favor, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Poses nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, um, so I think that's, um, five, two?
Oh, it's three.
Five, four, four, three, um, for approval. We're down to, um, item C, first reading, by tile only, ordinance number 774 to make a supplemental appropriation of $75,000, um, for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year, so as to authorize funding for the position of a project manager within the Economic Development Department.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second, um, for this, um, and, um, no discussion. All in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Aye.
Poses the same?
Nay.
Okay, so let the record show there's, um, six, one. Thank you. Item number nine, boards and commission minutes, nothing. Number 10, non, whole business, non. Um, new business, consideration of application for the, um, 2021 JAG Grant Funds to be used to purchase eight automated external defibrillators. The total amount of this grant, if approved, would be $11,760. If overshares occur, this will come out of the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office budget. Can we?
Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Let the record show seven zero. We're now down to Mr. Call, um, County Administrator report.
All right. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of council. Uh, tonight we have Mr. Bryant Brown with us, uh, from GM, GMK Associates, and he's going to give us an update on the courthouse renovations.
Good evening to all. Um, things are going good. We're still in the phase one of the courthouse. Uh, we're continuing to redo all the bathrooms in there, uh, working on the infrastructure rooms, rooms, roof supports, and really now beginning to get into the mechanical side of the electrical plumbing and all that for the future continuation and, uh, the code upgrades of the courthouse. So all that's moving pretty good. Um, we've been down a little bit this week because they've had court trial, trying to keep court going in there. So they're, they've got that going on all week. Our phase two is the startup, uh, and around September 6th. And so getting ready for that. And, uh, so things are going pretty good. Uh, just, uh, just running into a lot of hidden treasures in the old courthouse. Uh, eight feet of concrete and, uh, having to go through and just, uh, the, the good things about those old courthouses that were built, well-built way back 200 years ago. So good stuff. Glad to answer any questions.
Um, um, Mr. Brown, you and I have, uh, spent a, a bunch of time together talking about how we can reduce the cost of, of the courthouse. I think the last time we talked, I think you were saying you probably got a, a reduction, maybe $300,000, $400,000. Is that still the case? Or we got more?
I've still got it on, on the, on the list for about 410,000, somewhere in there. But what I'm running into, and no, I think it's no secret to anybody, we've got COVID pricing coming out right now. And so I continue to work on it daily along with the tax credits and some of the grants and stuff to try to supplement. So that continues to go on. And, uh, so we're working diligently on it.
Okay, um, again, we appreciate it very much that you continue to, um, to work on, trying to make sure we keep the costs down. As you know, um, um, one of the things we did, we had, um, um, just about 4.2 million in that barn, and this project is around, I think, um, it exceeded that. So, um, we need to do everything we can to bring that as down as much as possible.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But thank you again for your time, sir.
Thank you. Thank all of y'all.
Um, any, any other questions from council? Okay, thank you, um.
Thank you.
Okay, next, um, I wanted to provide an update on the Ridgeway Community Center. Um, council had previously passed resolutions to provide for an option of purchasing property in Ridgway with the intent of using the property for the community center. Uh, due to various issues, we were not able to make the site work. Uh, we're now focused on a 30-acre tract that's owned by the county adjacent to the recycling center outside of Ridgway. Uh, we're kind of in the conceptual and design plan of that. Um, we have done a little bit of preliminary site work, um, to be sure that the site is a good fit and that it can be, uh, reached within the projected budgeted amount. So I know a lot's been mentioned about that, and I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Mr. Call.
Yes, sir.
What was the, uh, can you enlighten, enlighten us on the various issues with the previous property?
The main problem was the entrance, getting in and out. Um, the DOT was not, um, they weren't happy. They weren't, it wasn't good enough to meet the standards that they, um, hold you to, basically.
Right. It had nothing to do with?
Yeah, well, pricing too was a problem.
Yeah. It had nothing to do with we was going to spend $100,000 an acre. Um, that had anything to do with it?
Yes, sir. A, a deal could not be reached. Yeah.
The property we currently looking at now, um, isn't it true it used to be an old landfill?
The back portion of it did. Yeah, there's, you know, there's, it's got a creek kind of dividing it, and so the back portion did. Um, we think for what we know, it's already been, we've already had site work done there in the past, and we feel the part that is usable should be okay for, for the information we have right now.
But we're still doing environmental stuff?
Right, yeah. We're doing our due diligence right now. Yes, sir. All righty. Um, next up we have Mr. Gregory Suber. Uh, he's the Deputy Director of Operating Reactor Licensing with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. And he is going to speak on environmental justice initiatives.
Good evening. Uh, first I would like to thank Mr. Moses, uh, in the Fairfield County Council for the opportunity to come and engage you on the subject of environmental justice. Uh, the NRC is committed to improving its outreach, outreach efforts to ensure that we are engaging everyone in the communities that are impacted by our regulatory activities in a meaningful way. My name is Gregory Suber, and I am the Director of the Environmental-
Excuse me, Mr. Sub. Could you put the mic closer to you?
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Gregory Suber, and I am the Director of the Environmental Justice Review Team. Uh, I'm joined here today with two of my colleagues, uh, Dr. Alan Fetter, uh, who is the Lead Project Manager for the Review Team, and Mr. Edwin Lee, who is a governmental liaison officer from our regional office, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia. Our meeting today is designed to be informative and instructive. I will provide an overview of the environmental justice review effort, and Mr. Fetter would describe the specific questions that we have developed as a starting point to get input from the community on our environmental justice activities. The NRC is an independent agency that is led by a group of political appointees that form the commission. The current commission has directed the staff to review how the NRC addresses environmental justice in its programs, policies, and activities. As I stated before, I am the lead for the Environmental Justice Review Team, which is composed of a broad cross-section of disciplines. For example, our team includes environmental scientists, staff from the Office of Small Business and Civil Rights, state and tribal liaisons, health physicists, attorneys, and project managers. In this portion of the presentation, I will provide some background on why we are conducting this review, uh, and give you some context as to what the commission is actually asking us to, to perform. In response to the commission, uh, direction, uh, our team was put together to conduct what we're calling a systematic review of how our programs, policies, and activities address environmental justice. We were instructed to conduct outreach to state and local officials, to tribal communities, and to labor unions. Okay, I'd like to just take a second to state that our emphasis is on the environmental justice process, and we know that often people have questions about particular licensing actions, uh, but specific licensing actions uh, are beyond the scope of what this particular study entails. Okay. A key question that we are dealing with, and we want to talk about today, is what is environmental justice? Environmental justice refers to the federal policy established in 1994 by Executive Order 21898. This executive order directed federal agencies to identify and address disproportionate and high adverse human health and environmental effects, um, on its programs, policies, and activities that impact minority and low-income communities. As an independent agency, the NRC was requested, rather than directed, to comply with this particular order. This executive order did not create new authorities, but the NRC decided to implement it with its existing authority to the extent practicable. The NRC does not own sites, does not manage nuclear facilities or properties, but it is our mission to ensure that these, uh, that these facilities are run in a safe and efficient manner. And as part of our licensing activities, we perform several reviews. We perform safety reviews, security reviews, and environmental justice, I mean, excuse me, environmental reviews. Uh, but the executive order did is it gave us, uh, the ability to consider environmental justice in our licensing decisions through the National Environmental, uh, Policy Act. Okay. In 2004, the commission issued a policy statement on environmental justice. That policy statement serves as the NRC's, uh, current position in considering environmental justice. And consistent, consistent with the chairman's, uh, 1994 determination that we would, that we discussed earlier, uh, the 2004 policy explains that environmental justice assessments is conducted through the NRC's NEPA process, and that's the National Environmental Policy Act. For example, when the NRC is reviewing a license application for a new reactor, an existing reactor, or a fuel facility, we would incorporate environmental justice into our NEPA analysis. With regard to the details, uh, of the staff's current assessment, the commission directed the staff to consider a number of areas, um, to include whether the 2004 policy statement is adequate or needs to be enhanced. The commission also directed the staff to consider recent executive orders, practices of other federal agencies, and input from tribal governments, as well as potential formal mechanisms that we can gather through other organizations. As part of this review, the commission directed the staff to engage a broad range of stakeholders, which is primarily why- which is primarily why we're here today, to give you an opportunity to give input into our review process. So to help inform this review, we have constructed a number of questions, and we have presented those questions to the chair. And right now, Mr. Alan Fetter, who is our project team leader, is going to go and give you an overview of those questions for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Gregory. Again, my name's Alan Fetter. I'm the Senior Project Manager on this. And so some of the, we put out what's called a federal register notice, and that is not known to many people, and one of the things we're here to do is help guide, if we're here personally to ask, to provide how to get that information. And after this, after this city council, or this council meeting, we'll be able to, available to, to meet with you as well if you have questions. So we had what's a federal register notice, and we put some questions to help inform the public comments. And one of those questions is, what is your understanding of what's meant by environmental justice at the NRC? And then when the NRC is, is conducting its other regulatory reviews, how could the NRC enhance opportunities for members of the public, of environmental justice communities to participate in licensing and regulatory activities? What ways could the NRC enhance identification of environmental justice communities? And what has the NRC done historically well, or currently does well with respect to environmental justice, including engagement efforts? And in what your view, what portion of the environmental, of the 2004 policy statement are effective? And there are others. What would you recommend that the NRC consider any particular organization's environmental justice programs in its assessments? Looking at other federal, state, and tribal environmental justice programs, what action could the NRC take to enhance consideration of environmental justice? And considering recent executive orders on environmental justice, what actions could the NRC take to enhance consideration of environmental justice? And are there other opportunities to expand consideration of environmental justice at the NRC, considering the agency's mission? And if so, what are they? So we have a, there's a comment period that's open until August 23rd, which is, believe it or not, less than a month away. And we are accepting comments by people who don't want to use email, by telephone, you can leave a voicemail. The number's up here on the screen, and we can provide that. We have a few pamphlets to hand out. There's also an email there. I'm not going to read, read through that and take all your time. And then after we receive the comments and do our other review efforts, we're going to submit the results of the review to the, our commission. And then there's the contact information. There's an email up here. It's nrc-ejreviews@nrc.gov. And again, I'm the review project, Environmental Justice Review Project Manager, and my email is here. And I'd be willing to give my phone number to anyone else who wants to get in touch with me. And now I'm going to hand it back over to Gregory.
Thanks, Alan. So in closing, I'd just like to, once again, thank the council for allowing us this opportunity to come and to speak with you. Once again, encourage any, anyone here, any member of the council to reach out to us directly if you have questions. But we did have some information that we've given out and still have other things that can give you, you know, more specifics about the questions, because we're really interested in understanding what works for Fairfield County, what works for the people in the surrounding areas in and around VC Summer. So with that, sir, I thank you.
Now, before you go, sir, one of the things, I guess, Ms. Tangia Bryce Jacobs led some questions that she had. I think she listed about five questions on there. I don't know whether you have a list of those questions or not, but we'd be glad to make sure you get them. So, so as a very activist within her community, we want to try to make sure she, try to get some of these answers to these questions she listed. Could you provide answers to these questions that she had stated earlier?
Yes, sir. I could provide answers to the questions, and if she has some time later this week, since, since we are in town till, till Thursday, we could, we could meet with her in her organization, maybe on Thursday afternoon if, if she's available. So, I mean, that's the purpose, that's why we came here physically. We want to have that type of engagement, sir.
And so again, thank you for your time. Any council have any questions though before you leave?
I guess one of, one of the questions is, do you have any newspaper announcements or any, any other place that this is going to be presented besides here at council meetings? What other kinds of communications do you have outstanding?
Okay, so currently, we did not put any notification in any particular newspaper. If that's something that will be helpful, then, then that's definitely something that we would consider, which is, which is why we're here. We're trying to figure out what mechanisms work. I think Mr. Fetter defaulted to what we do as a federal government, which is a federal register notice, and we're realizing that federal register notice, I mean, how many people check their federal register notices today? We realize that for certain communities, that doesn't work. So, so I thank you for that suggestion. And if you, and if you have any more, I mean, previously, we've worked with, we work for church organizations. I know we've done some stuff with Whitehall. I don't-- AME, Whitehall AME. And so we have contacted, but that's exactly the type of feedback and information that we're, that we're looking for, because what works for Fairfield, what, what works for some other county might not work for Fairfield.
Because I think in light of the fact that the White Oak Center is now closed, it behooves us to know what center or where is the gathering place that's going to be listed from now on for those who might have emergency management in any given accident.
Okay. All right. And so, and that's something, so that emergency preparedness, that's something we can take back to our staff and have a discussion about, most definitely. And Alan, did you get the name of that? That was white?
This White Oak Conference Center was listed on, I think, most of the information regarding the nuclear--
Like a gathering place for--
Yeah. And it's now closed, so I don't know where, whether an alternate gathering site has been determined.
Yeah, they've moved it to the middle school.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Lastly, we have a request of action from our Economic Development Department, and Ty is here if anybody has any questions, but we are requesting approval for a bid award and contract approval of the Peach Road Water Main Extension Project. The proposed qualified bidder is Lake Murray Utility Company Incorporated, which submitted the lowest total bid amount. The proposed extension will serve the future industrial site on Peach Road. Approval and award is recommended by Thomason Hutton Engineering and South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority. This total, the project will be grant funded, so it won't be any, any cost to the county.
Do Ty want to, I mean, Mr. Davenport want to talk about it any?
You got any?
Good evening, council. I really don't have anything to add to that. The line will be installed. It's 100% covered by grants. And you know, like Mr. Carter said, it'll serve the future industrial site that we are currently developing, the 500-acre parcel.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion other than what we've already just had? All in favor, let it be known by eye.
Aye.
Pose its name. Let the record show seven zero. Clerk to council report--
Can I, can I ask the county administrators some questions, please?
Okay, you want to do that in county council time?
I can. That's fine.
Okay. Clerk to council report, none. County council time. Mr. Paul.
Back in April of 2021, this council started budget workshops, trying our best to save the taxpayers without reducing services the best we could. I want to refresh everyone's minds on what was done in the budget. On April the 13th, 2021, Chairman Bell stated, "We needed to give serious thought going forward because we were in serious financial condition." Mr. Bell stated that when you cut out services that people pay taxes for, that is unacceptable. We were not able to buy any patrol cars, ambulances, fire trucks, and any other necessary vehicles. Sheriff Montgomery was also requesting a evidence officer that he barely needed, but froze the position to help the county meet the budget. I think now to request money for a mini-part and upgrades to a ball field or a slap in the sheriff's face. On August the 21st, 2021, Mr. Trapp stated, "We couldn't afford to accept grants for the farmer's market because, in his words, 'we are scraping the bottom of the barrel.'" I hope the sheriff sees the meeting tonight, and I would encourage him to submit a supplemental request for an officer and some vehicles. Other things reduced in the budget were recycling centers, closed an extra day, library mileage increase was voted down four to three, and the library really needed the money. We removed the car allowance for the Economic Development Director. We removed the transit assistant position. We removed the tax assessor assistant position. We removed building maintenance temps. We removed animal control temps, and we reduced lem site hours. Also now, we have hired a consultant that we are paying $200 an hour for, and he has the authority to hire someone that makes 40 an hour and also claim mileage in reimbursement. I've been told that several employees have received raises or stipends because they are doing extra work in the last month. Because I would assume there are a lot of county employees doing extra work because we got rid of positions, so had those employees been compensated as well. Recently, the Department of Commerce stated they wanted to give us $2.2 million to help with projects. We have someone who is trying to help us, but we are going to throw our money away on mini-parks and upgrades to a ball field. I was recently notified that Chairman Bell, on four to five different occasions, has either called or showed up without an appointment in Columbia to Mr. Rainwater's office, who is responsible for the redistricting process and interfering with that process. So, Mr. Bell, tell us exactly what district you are trying to interfere in and what council member you are trying to get out. Also, there is a bi-weekly meeting that occurs to make sure the Dominion settlement is going according to plan. In a recent meeting, Chairman Bell was told that the money allocated for the bonds, once you apply them to the bonds, the debt mileage would need to be reduced. Chairman Bell stated, "What the citizens don't know, they can't ask about." A blatant disregard for the taxpayers of Fairfield County. Thank you.
Any, any other counsel?
As we, as we think about the, as we think about the budget work, one of the things, as we voted to do the, do the budget, we voted on the budget, I guess that vote was four-three. And one, one of the things we hope for to be able to do is that we are, the county is going to receive some of what we call rescue money. And that rescue money is that there are specific things you can spend that money on. So we're trying to gear up to make sure we can, we have, we have the items that, that the rescue money can be spent on. This roof that we're talking about here is, it's been waiting for about four years, and it's fallen in. Okay, and the question is, do we want to make sure we keep people safe, or do we want the roof to fall in? We choose not to let it fall in. So again, if there's no other counsel making any comments--
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a question. I agree with you on the roof, but is it possible to restructure, reword that ordinance? Because I'm not in agreements with bundling it all up together. Is there a way we can reword that? Or do it individually?
Mr. Robinson, we'll look at it, okay? Okay, any other? Any other council members, no other council members or executives?
One more thing, Mr. Chair. I forgot to mention District Six, I think it was maybe two years ago, the grant was applied for through the COG with the cleaning up houses and so forth and so on. Well, the grant was approved, although I met with Mr. Sprouse down at the COG on Friday, running into problems as far as signatures with paperwork. I think out of the 40 houses that were acknowledged, only five had proper paperwork so they could continue on with cleaning the area. Well, sometime in, I think it may be in September, we're planning on another community meeting so we can notify citizens as far as what we have going and what we're exactly looking at, because this could be a great thing for the area. Just to let everybody know, also Habitat for Humanity was contacted, and it's just not like we're going to tear it down. We're going to try to rebuild the community up also. So just be on the lookout for that, citizens of District Six. Also, on the 17th of July, I think it was a Saturday, I want to thank several citizens that took it upon themselves to actually clean up an area of Golf Course Road down from Hillcrest all the way to 34. That was Mary Ann Talbert, Mary Urias, if I say that incorrectly, I apologize, Mason Adams, John Ross, and Dory Ross. All those few citizens collected over 45 bags of trash, tires, and furniture just in a certain area. So I really do appreciate them putting forth their time and effort. So just want to say thank you.
Mr. Bell? I would like for Mr. Carter to just kind of explain the consultant thing, because I don't want it to be where you didn't have a chance to explain how, how it happened.
Okay, so, well, the gist of it is, is we have five vacancies that work very closely together. We have an administrator out, we have an assistant administrator out, clerk to council, community development, and also our executive assistant is no longer, no longer full-time. You combine those salaries up, and it's over about $450,000 that we aren't paying out. We have Dominion Projects, we have Mount Zion Projects, we have Courthouse Projects, and honestly, I can't, I just can't do it all. So very fortunate to have Mr. Driggers. He's a retired administrator with the City of Greer and who has lots of project experience, expansion experience. So with, with who we lost, you know, I think it was critical for us to have somebody to come in and help keep these-- have somebody to come in and, and help keep these projects moving forward. And, and you know, you don't want to, you don't want to have any penalties. And, and if you're not on top of them, you can have, you can get yourself in a hole in a hurry, so I, I just think it's critical that we have somebody experienced and who also can advise me. Um, you know, I, I need the advice and the help along with that, so.
And that, that is also something that falls up under the discretion of the administrator, correct?
Yes, sir. It is, that's, that's under my authority to, to sign that and, and execute that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
I have a question also. As far as the Dominion, uh, settlement, are we still looking to have a third party to, to operate that particular project per the, uh, suggestion of, of Department of Commerce? Because they said that they would fund it.
As far, yeah, now that's what you guys responded to, um, in, in terms of the priority of spending of the funds. Um, I think some of those monies would go towards that. Um, a- a- and I think, you know, i- it's still in the works, but, um, I think i- if the Joint Water and Sewer Commission proceeds forward, you know, they're, they're willing to help us out.
But, but let's just be clear. Um, the, the, um, what the South Carolina, um, Commerce Department was asking us about is trying to help us and assist us in the wastewater management, the wastewater system. That's the only thing they were asking us, um, um, could they provide some help with? Not the project, not any other projects themselves. But now, we will, we hopefully we'll have someone from Dominion, um, with us as we begin to, as we begin to do these projects. Um, someone from Dominion, not the, um, South Carolina Commerce Department.
Was it not the mega site also?
Uh, no.
I think it was.
Okay, um, no.
We want Ty to answer, Ty might be a better.
Um, yeah, thank you again. The, um, the funds from Dominion and management of those funds, I th- the, the primary, most technical, difficult project obviously is going to be the wastewater treatment plant. So, I think we want to allocate, um, funds for, um, I'd maybe call it an owner's rep, uh, to sort of stand in between us and the, uh, the designers and, and, and the contractor to, you know, to make sure that when they send in a, an invoice, they've actually done what they've said they've done on the invoice, and there's just not, um, you know, anybody here in the county that has the expertise to really track that. So, I, I, I definitely think there's a need for that person, or, or that, you know, company or somebody to do that, but that's not a, uh, a huge expense. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's not, you know, a million dollars, it's, it's a couple hundred thousand, or just somebody to, to, or less to, um, to help us to make sure that we are, at the end of the day, we get a wastewater treatment facility that's built correctly, that's, that we can operate and, and so forth. Um, you know, somebody who knows more than, more than we do. The, um, the other dollars, like the, uh, the money to, um, or some of the other dollars, like the money to grade the property within the, the, uh, the Commerce Center and the mega site. Um, I, we, we, we do the, I do that, and other economic development professionals do that um, regularly, and this is a big, it's a big dollar amount. The, the mega site is six million dollars, but it's still just a grading project, whether it's ten acres or a hundred acres, it's the same, same type of thing, so I think we'll be able to handle that with, um, we'll, and we'll have, um, an engineering firm on board that'll, that'll also be, you know, paid to keep us going in the right direction there, but the key component that, that Commerce is concerned about is the wastewater treatment plant, because that's the future of this county, we've got it, we've got to get that done correctly, on time and within budget.
Um, um, thank you, Mr. Davenport, for clearing that up for us. Um, really appreciate it. Um, some of the things that are said, um, even from council members are so far-fetched, i- it really don't work for, um, I was spending a lot of time and trying to address them, because, um, I, sometimes I don't know where you get the information from. So, again, we want to thank you all, and now we're down to executive session. Um, can we get a motion to go into executive session?
It's been moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session. Um, item A, personnel matter discussion regarding the clerk to council, the vacancy, introduction, and possible action pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation thirty dash four dash seventy-one. Item B, receipt of legal advice, discussion concerning the possible sale of the former hospital property in existing leasing pursuant to South Carolina Code. Item C, receipt of legal advice in response to South Carolina, um, OBR litigation, um, C eight number twenty-eighteen dash CP dash twenty-three dash zero-one-two-nine-four pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation thirty dash four seventy-eight-two. Um, you, you hear the items, can we, um, um, are you ready to, all in favor, say it, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Pose his name. So, we now, thank you, now going to executive session.
Can we um can we get a motion to come out of the executive session?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Um it's been moved and second that we um come out of executive session. Um there's nothing um approved in executive session. Um so um are you ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by ah.
Aye.
Pose his name. Okay, um do we have any do we have any motions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we hire Ms. Kimberly Roberts as our clerk to counsel contingent upon the pre-hire screening.
Second.
Um it's been moved and second that we hire um Ms. Kimberly Roberts as the new clerk to counsel for Fairfield County. Um continued upon the the pre-hire screening. Any discussion?
I'd just like to welcome Ms. Robertson, if we can catch up speed.
Um okay, um any other discussion there? Um are you ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose his name to let the record show seven zero.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
No.
Oh, hold on a minute.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Opioid litigation, I will need a motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that uh in regards to the opioid litigation that we uh look for the options. That is eighty-five percent to fifteen percent. Eighty-five percent to the to the municipality county and fifteen percent to the state.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved um and second, any other discussion? Um all in favor said it be aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, that the record show seven zero. And any other um items?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, it's been moved and second that we we adjourn. Um um. Um all in favor, let it be known by ah.
Aye.
Pose his name. We now stand adjourned.
Right, have good night.